Okay, well we'll call the meeting of the June Board of Directors of Harlan Community School District order. Well, thank you for coming, Board members, and welcome, teachers, and principals, administrators, and other citizens that are here. We're glad to have them. And so, we do have a forum. We have Jade and Greg, and let's see, Al and Joe. So, that's four and five, so we should be good self. Yes, count myself. Thank you, Greg. So, I guess we have a forum. Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so this is a public forum, and we always welcome the citizens that would like to come and have anything they'd like to as far as issues. And so, I think, as it says, a few hours before, you need to contact Catherine and get on the schedule. And we can listen, but we might have to wait until we actually discuss it, so it's actually on the board agenda. So, that's just a brief paraphrase how this paragraph B goes public forum. So, we'll turn it over to Superintendent Barnett.
Actually, we have five citizens who would like to speak today to us. Did you guys all have something to say, or did you just kind of want to go as a group?
Maybe as a group.
Okay, so, we've got Mindy, excuse me, and Darth Nate.
Yeah.
Kim Peterson, and Barry and Emily Swanson would like to speak to us.
And I have some papers. So, we have asked to be part of the agenda for tonight's meeting to discuss the school permit policy for the students who live within the one-mile radius. As the DOT website states, if you live within one mile or more from the school, you are enrolled, and you can get a school permit unless a special need exists. And that's where we're coming tonight to hope that you guys would maybe reconsider Harlan school policy. So, majority of schools are fortunate enough to have all of their facilities located at one location at their high school. Unfortunately, Harlan does not have that luxury. Their baseball, softball fields are located more than a mile away from the school, and also the football field and track. So, below is a chart, and we did some research. We called around to surrounding schools within our districts. And questions that we asked the principal, the high school principals, were the district policies, what were their policy for students within the one-mile radius, and were their facilities located at their school. And as you can see in the chart, it shows that Dennison does allow it if the students are in extracurricular activities. The high school principal will sign off on those students who live within the one-mile radius, and all of their facilities are located at the school. So, really, they have no need for it, but they do allow it because they felt like it was a need for the parents to get their kids to extracurricular activities. Glenwood also is the same. They do allow it. No, not all of their facilities are located by the high school. Avoca, they got rid of the one-mile radius altogether. They don't even deal with that. Every student can get a school permit, and all of their facilities are located at the high school. Arveva, their softball field is not located at their facility, so they allow it for softball. They also allow if the parents can prove that they need, it's a need for them as well. IKM Manning is a yes. They do allow it if the students need to go to school functions outside of normal school hours, but they don't allow eighth graders to drive at all, to get a school permit at all, until they're done in May. And then if they're in, like, weightlifting or conditioning in the summertime, then they'll allow it. And then, he also told me that if they only go out for track, he won't allow it until in the spring this family can come back and pass. And not all of their facilities are located at their area either. Carroll High, they do not allow a school permit within the one-mile radius, but they do transport by bus. So, their facilities are not all located there either. Atlantic, theirs was a no. They just don't deal with the hardships, is the answer that we got. Most of theirs are located at the school except for baseball. Tri-Center, the principal's reply was, they live out in no man's land, so everyone gets it at their school. And Bullier Valley also allow, and so does Shannon Doha. Shannon Doha does make the parents sign a form to allow that. We feel, as I'm speaking, kind of for all of us, that it would be very beneficial for our children to be getting a school permit because they are very involved in extracurricular activities. But I'm speaking for myself here, but I don't think it's on the coaches to find the transportation, you know, to talk with the parents and say, "Hey, Emily, can you give Owen a ride to practice?" I just don't think it's, it's not in their job description. I do realize that I'm a parent, and it's my responsibility, but I don't, I don't see why a one-mile radius has to be the determining factor to allow my son to receive a school permit. I don't feel that it should matter if they are within one mile or seven miles away. It clearly states in the DOT website that this falls under the special circumstances. And below, down below, is how many times a day Darth and I have to leave to go either drop off Owen or pick him up for practices. And it's quite often. And I know this is the summertime, and it'll be less in the school year, but it's still...
Still time away from work every time that we have to ask her bosses to leave.
So, on average, I spend one, probably one and a half to two hours a day leaving work, clocking out, and, you know, and if you add that up daily, it's almost a full day's worth of pay. So, my son, we live on Cyclone. If he was through to the Ball Diamond, that is 1.2 miles away. That averages 31 minutes walking time. He's not physically able to get down there and back in time for the next sport, carrying a catcher's bag, his baseball bag.
Basketball.
Basketball, yes, because he would be going to that. And the same with Merrill Field, it's 1.6 miles from our house, and over probably 36 minutes walking time. Just, he's not physically able to make it from place to place. And another point I'd like to bring up, you know, they say, "Well, you're within the school district." Sorry. But the, say for instance, they're going to a baseball game, the bus leaves from the Ball Diamonds. It does not leave at the high school, so we're back to the same, the same problem.
Depending how many sports the kids are into, some might have to go for this. They come in early before school, spend the day at school, go to track, down to Merrill Field after school, and then get down to the baseball field after that, you have two. So, maybe it's a big running circle all the way around for everybody. And I know that one of the coaches had made a comment about finding another young kid to ride with. I mean, how are these parents going to feel about having, and most of them can't have passengers anyway, but how are they going to feel about having an extra kid in your car if something were to happen while their young driver is driving to one of the practices or to school too? And I've got a copy of Shannon Mill's policy. I only had one, because I couldn't count higher than one. I'll give you one some days.
And I know that we're not the only ones. We're just the only ones that came tonight, but I do know, for example, Todd over there, he kind of runs into that as well, and there's other families also that, but I don't think it's a huge amount, but it would be very beneficial.
Thank you. This is good research. We're not supposed to come.
Very good. We thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I do have one question.
Yeah, well, you have more time, so...
When will we maybe know an outcome, like, a yes or a no? Is it the next school board meeting? Or, or can you not answer that?
I think we'd have to make it a policy, so we'd have to, like, policy state two readings, so you might see a draft of the first policy. If we would get to that in July, I don't know if we will or not, so it'd have to be two board meetings before it's fully approved, but...
Would we inform them if we were to put it on the agenda for discussion?
It would be on the agenda for discussion, for sure, yeah.
For the next meeting?
For the next meeting.
Does that mean we need to come back, or...
Totally up to you. You can come back if you want, and you can come and listen, or you can just come and still sign up for your, you can still talk if you're here for less minutes, so whichever, but yeah, we want you to be here, and we want to, we're not supposed to be talking, but we do want to solve the problem, you know? Like, I get it, and we understand, so...
Do we need to call in like we did for the school board?
Yes.
If we decide to come back next?
If you want, if you want more time, yes. Like, you each get five minutes, so you have 30 minutes right now.
So, even if we don't want to talk, we should still call in and be like, like, even if we decide that we don't need to come back, we should still call in?
Oh, no, no, you don't have to. It's a public meeting. You can just show up. Even if it's not on the agenda, you want to listen to something else.
Okay.
Kind of boring.
Okay, well, thank you for coming, and we'll move on to item C, which is the...
Sounds great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you don't want to stay.
You're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Kind of boring.
Okay, any, any mention or comments about the agenda? Otherwise, we'll look for somebody to put it forward and then to approve the agenda. That's from Joe, and we got Jane seconding. All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
And those opposed, name. Okay, the item D is discussion items, and so now we get to turn it over to Superintendent Barnett.
Okay, well, we have a guest, who's not going to be a guest, she's going to be here regularly now. Casey Ring, our new high school...
Hello, hello, principal is here. We're excited to have her. So, normally, Casey, we have pictures, and we just kind of what happened in the last month, so we show those up. Is that not working right?
It's, you timed off apparently.
And then, you guys just talk about what's happening at the high school. So, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about how things have gone so far.
I don't have much to review. I've been to a couple meetings, a couple admin meetings, and have some more being set up to kind of talk about our professional development for the year, upcoming year, with the instructional coaches and Mr. Fuller, and that's kind of where we're going to start. Just moved into town and starting to figure out the best way to get to school. Trying to time it, because it's always good to know, and my kids are starting to get the feel of town, and like I told you, Joe is getting into some camps this week and starting to meet kids, and everybody's been very welcoming, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jeff is on vacation today, but Anne, anything exciting at elementary?
Well, our lead team met last week, and we're meeting again Wednesday to kind of get, look at some data and see where that data takes us for PD for the year. And we are still, well, interviewing for paras this week, because we have some parapositions that we'd still like to hire. We have some long-term subs that we're still looking for, and a third grade teacher, so...
Hired a nurse?
Yes, yes.
That's good.
Getting the building cleaned up. Bob's doing a good job down there of getting floors waxed and carpets clean. Some exciting news, we've got 12 kids that will be enrolling into just sixth grade next year that weren't attending Harlan Community School District last year. So, that's good. That was kind of a small grade last year. We've got six coming from Shelby County Catholic, and then six that are, that were just coming from other towns. So, that's good to add to that grade, because that was kind of a smaller one to begin with. And so, if we can keep adding, that'll be great. I think we have a total of like 15 total new kids that have reported that they'll be coming to school here next year that weren't attending Harlan Community School District last year, so...
Awesome.
That's good. That was kind of a small grade last year. We've got six coming from Shelby County Catholic, and then six that are, that were just coming from other towns. So, that's good to add to that grade, because that was kind of a smaller one to begin with. And so, if we can keep adding, that'll be great. I think we have a total of like 15 total new kids that have reported that they'll be coming to school here next year that weren't attending Harlan Community School District last year, so...
One yours? Do you have a sixth grade?
Yeah.
What's that? Do we have plus, do we have losses?
Yeah, we've got, well, we've got four that we know of so far that won't be returning. We have two families that were moving and had two kids each, so we're still netting 11.
Netting, right.
Yeah.
And the gain, was it open enrollment or moved to town?
Excuse me?
The gain was moved to town or open enrollment?
Moved to town, yeah. Still on the open enrollment, more moving in than moving out? Yeah, by landslide, yes. So, it's like, good to hear. And I don't know, I should maybe ask you this question earlier, but any more information on enrollment and general trends?
So, Brian just...
People have it by the end of the week. When I spoke to him, it's, it'll be interesting.
It'll be interesting to see, yeah. And one of the questions he had was kind of the influx of sixth grade, because we have Shelby County Catholics, so he said...
He didn't understand that. He said, "Why are you getting a spike in sixth grade?"
All the time.
Well, I think I can explain that for you.
Yeah, and you know, it's, that generally, even over the course of the last five, six, seven years, that is our grade that we always have the highest numbers of kids. And here, a couple years ago, we had about 28 new students to the middle school, and I think 16 or 17 were in sixth grade. I think it kind of gets to be that transition year, and when some families are...
You should have a big, big year next year. There should be a big year, because if you look at their numbers, there should be a big class coming over there from there.
So, Mindy, something from elementary? Okay, so, we are going to do a little presentation tonight on Portrait of a Graduate, and I have several people here who are involved in that. We have Lori Stitz from Iowa Western, Bill was involved, Anne was involved, Brenda was involved, am I missing? And then we have board members, so Greg, Joe, and Jim. Yeah, we have a lot of committees that we have, so we're not going to have as many next year, so it'll be good. Brian was also... Oh, Brian?
Yeah, her feelings.
Oh, sorry, Brian, you were there, yes. And so, we, Portrait of a Graduate is just kind of basically, what do we want our students to, what do we want to produce in our students? So, from preschool all the way up to high school, and what kind of skills do we want them to have? So, this was just a way to gather 40 to 50 people, and it was really kind of cool. Each, each month we met, there were quite a few people in the room, and from religious aspects, to business, to students, to teachers, to parents, all kinds. So, this is just one of the goals of Portrait of a Graduate, and it is a national, it's a national, just a national system, but we are one of the very first school districts on this side of Iowa to complete Portrait of a Graduate. A lot of eastern Iowa has, but not western. So, just understanding how we can create students that are going to be adaptive, will collaborate, think on their own, and think together as a group, and, I don't know, just be problem solvers. So, the Portrait of a Graduate takes kind of two different things. The rigorous content of the academics, and the skills and mindsets which some could call social-emotional learning or problem solving, and combines those things to deeper learning. So, you combine both of those, like, I'm sure we all know or have, you know, some people are very, very smart, but may not know how to convey that or work with a group, even though they're very intelligent in one way. And some may have a really good, really high set of social skills, but not understand the other things. So, this is just working, it's not that we can't all learn how to do that, but just putting a focus on both of them. So, here's, here's our numbers. We had 51 participants, and Brenda, or anyone else that would like to just chime in, please, please do. And they were from all those different categories, like I said, many different categories. And then we had six meetings, December through June. Four of them were whole group meetings, lots of hours. We dedicated about 20 hours to this project. And we came up with four competencies and 16 descriptors, which I'm going to show you in a minute. And so, 65 different Iowa school districts are doing it, and there's over 350 school districts. So, we're one of those 65, and we're the first one in southwest Iowa to do this. So, here are some pictures of our process. I don't know, Lori, or Brenda, would you like to share anything about the process, or help?
I thought it was excellent, because we had such a diverse group of people that, and interesting, those who were from Harlan and grew up here, and those who were not like myself, but are transplanted into the community, to understand really the diversity of what happens in the, in the school. Educators, we had people who worked in the field, out in the communities. So, I thought that was really exciting, to see parents and grandparents, all that kind of stuff, so that was...
My favorite evening was when they brought the high school students in, and we kind of posed those questions to the students and what they had to say, and I thought they were very forthcoming and shared that evening. And backs up with, I know sometimes you guys bring students into here to share things, and I think that's always important to, you know, as we plan for them, to always make sure that we hear from them too, so...
Anybody else, or you? A lot of it was in smaller groups, and you had discussions, and kind of went through... So, this is our timeline. This is how we started. So, in December, we just kind of started, started to consider if this would be helpful for the district, and learn what it was more about just from an internal team. Then we decided in February, as the larger group, just, they talked about the why, and we did have Green Hills AEA, a group from Green Hills AEA, what's the word I'm trying to say? Present, or...
Facilitate.
Facilitate, there we go. Facilitate this, the whole process. And this was new to them too, so we helped them out, because they've never done it either, so we were their first one, so I think, we're the pilot. Then in March, we started to narrow the scope and to figure out what the competencies would be, and then prioritized it in April, and then we will, we got feedback from people like, okay, here's what, what do you think, and is this good, is this bad? And then, in June, we're in the June, we're in phase four now, so we're going to, hopefully we'll adopt the planning, and then going from there, we'll move forward with these and help us figure out an action plan as to how to implement these throughout the school day, and introduce them to teachers, and students, and parents. So, this is the first time it's been much more public. And these are just the steps that, and we can just kind of skip over those, but we did some research, discussed the why, got feedback from stakeholders, we had surveys that we looked at, and then the results, so our next step, these are, these are the competencies, and then what we would like to do is, we had some people in marketing and graphic design on our team, so they're going to help us design something that's really flashy and catchy with all of these things that a Harlan, a Harlan student will come up with. So, the first thing was that we want our students to be fearlessly resilient, and then those were the four indicators of that. So, what we will do next is figure out what, what data points will we collect to show that they are getting lifelong increase, they are critical thinkers, they're overcoming academic and personal barriers, embracing the struggle, because sometimes it's not always easy to learn, so, and sometimes, how are, how are they doing that? And then taking ownership of their own learning and their actions. So, that's the first one. The second one is just to be an engaged, globally engaged student, so you respect everyone, you seek cultural understanding beyond your geographical limits, demonstrate character kindness and empathy, and impact the community in a positive manner. So, the way we came up with all of these is we brainstormed and probably had 10, and then we just kept narrowing it down to what goes together. And then we basically agreed, came to consensus as a group. An emotionally intelligent individual, so just a healthy lifestyle. I remember, I think one of the comments, it was, one of the groups was just like, we just, we need our kids to be happy too, not just always feeling stressful. So, caring for others, seeking adventure, humor, and joy, and nurturing and establishing relationships, positive relationships. And then the last one, obviously, is we want for sure that for them to be academically prepared, and just have a knowledge of several different disciplines in school, articulate thoughts and ideas effectively, learn how to work interdependently with themselves and others, and then constructive, engage in constructive feedback. And a lot of these intertwine with each other, and so, some of the data points, once we get down to things and we're measuring things, it might measure three or four, four different things that we look at, so... And then, so this is our next step, so we're presenting now for adoption, and then the implementation phase, we need to design the progressions for competencies. What do those look like? Work with teachers, what does it look like in your classroom? Start gathering baseline data, determine professional learning needs, and then create an implementation plan for different levels. It looks differently at the elementary level, but at least we're, we're all using the same language, and we're all using those four competencies. Because even though a kindergartner might not understand what those things are, we can develop strategies for them to understand eventually what they are, and, I mean, you have to work together in kindergarten, you learn how to play. So, and then we, that third piece is just the, the measurement piece of data can we collect to say that we, that these are working? And just to review them, and if they aren't working, then what do we do? How do we, how do we help kids? So, this is just the timeline. So, in the fall, we'll introduce them to teachers, parents in the community, and then the winter, we'll just create our plan for implementing them for the, for the school year, and we'll work with our lead teams. The spring, we'll look at the data and evaluate it, and the summer, we'll review and adjust if needed. And that's, that's it. So, does anybody have any questions? Am I missing anything for those of you that were there, or... It was a very good way for me, I would say, to get to know people in the community, and I really appreciated that, and I, I just really appreciate that there were so many people there. The May meeting didn't have quite as many, because May's just so busy, but everyone was very honest and gave good feedback, I thought, in your groups. And we had different discussions. They kind of threw things out there and we discussed, so...
I have a question about the second, I think it was the second thing, and what was, yes. So, being a globally engaged citizen, values and respects diversity, seeks cultural understanding beyond geographical limits, so what does that look like in implementation for a kid?
So, I just think that just looks...
Is it the curriculum, or...
Oh, no. I think we were just thinking, like, you value just the differences between you and I, and you value the differences culturally, maybe even outside of Iowa, or outside of, you know, just that, yeah, not, not curriculum-wise.
Well, I'm just curious. Obviously, that's kind of a hot button, right now, not just in our state, in other states as well.
Sure.
So, I'm curious, I know there's some laws in Iowa too that are in place, whether they're agreed with or not, but I was just curious, is that trying to implement curriculum that helps teach that, or...
No, I just think understanding different cultures. Yep, that's, that's all that is. And that was discussed as the, as the larger group, and it was put out there, so it was a, it was a bigger discussion, but yeah, yeah. I think one of the things too, was that there are lots of people who live in Harlan, who grew up in Harlan, and then they come back to Harlan, and do, do you understand what else is going on, maybe even in Chicago, or something like that? Do you know what I mean? Like, a different... But the diversity piece, I think, that we discussed was more your skills and my skills and other, in that manner, and the kindness and the empathy, all of kind of those things, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to know that, simply because I think somebody will ask about it at some point when it rolls out like that, and I wanted to know if it was...
Sure.
It is a hot button topic in our state, so...
And these aren't necessarily pieces of curriculum that we would teach, they're just skills that we want to teach, so we have, I have a core curriculum, so we follow that. And, but these pieces would just be other, other value-added things that you're going to have to know eventually when you get a job, or when you're...
Sure.
Yeah. Good question?
That was my question.
Good question?
Yeah, good stuff. You know, when I, when I ran for this job, one of the things I said is I was interested in reading, writing, and arithmetic. And so, I thought it was really interesting when this door was opened to, I guess a popular word today is values, because maybe you don't want to say morals, but, so this is quite an interesting door to open, and it's been real fun though. There've been some really great people from the community, and everybody's really had a lot of good thoughts about it and everything. Steve Savane, I think he's probably leading it up, and...
He is, and I'm... He is, and I'm glad that you said his name. He wanted to be here tonight. He's having knee surgery and he wouldn't care if we told you that, but he had it today. So there's no way he could be here. But he texted me this morning and said, I wish I could be here. So yeah.
Other than having knee surgery, I'll bet he did.
Uh, yeah.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
I found it very interesting, you know, the fact that so many compound moral words have been thrown out at us. And it's like, oh, what do you do with all this stuff? It's, it's interesting. It'll be interesting to see where this goes.
One of the more impactful nights, I agree with Lori, was when those students came, who came back and talked about, were you prepared when you left? They really opened up some great thoughts as to, you know, things that they would have liked to have had more of. And it was, it was really a valuable piece to this whole thing. But it was a great experience.
Yeah. Yeah, they were very open about a lot of things.
They're candid. Yeah, they were not afraid to say what, you know.
No, I think we need more of this and that.
And area education really was helpful too.
Yeah, they were, they just kind of did facilitate. They just, they wanted to learn this process so they can use it in other places. But really truly, we made the decisions. That's what I liked about it is they just kind of threw things out there. You talked and you gave it back. And I think that another thing that I find that's really been great at Harlan since I've been here is just the inclusivity of students with special needs. I mean, kids are so welcoming and just, I don't know, it's, it's kind of amazing how.
One night was all the data, which was kind of interesting, which showed Harlan as far as kids going to college and some data points that showed Harlan really doing really well. And so their talent shows, oh, you want to keep this, don't you? I thought that was kind of, kind of enticing, encouraging. And somebody even said, when they started out, Harlan's known for its grit. So that's good to hear.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you guys for everyone that was participated. Do you have any last parting words or?
I, I liked the whole process, just for getting everybody's, you know, you might have five of your own posts at home with ideas. And then it was, you know, it was nice to see, hey, somebody else had that same, you know, that same idea, or you could combine it and come up with the competencies. I thought that was, everybody seemed to be on the same page. There wasn't a lot of, you know, negotiation or discussion. It was, it was all very student based and what's good for kids and.
It wasn't like the facilities committee.
No. That was.
There weren't a lot of those.
Yeah, there were a lot.
There were a lot more similar.
Yeah. It was just nice that.
You know, there was a lot of people that I wouldn't have expected there.
Yes.
That, you know, we pulled from the community. So that was, I liked that too.
Considering the range of people, how often we fell to the same place.
Yes.
Considering all the different.
Yes.
Yeah. It was, yeah, it was a good process.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Yeah. Yeah. I'll see you at seven.
You want to stay for the action items? That's where it really gets fun is E, action items. And so here we go. Action item number one, personnel report, Catherine.
Yep. Um, had a lot of new hires this month, it looks like. A lot of coaching and, but to highlight, we hired a kindergarten teacher, Carson Bray. She was a student teacher for us. So we're bringing her on. We hired a food service supervisor. So that's super exciting for me. And to just touch on, we, we're in our, this will be our, this is our fourth week of summer lunch, serving summer lunches. And we're, we're served, we served over 325 kiddos last week. So this is our last week of that and it's going really well.
And busy Thursday.
And then.
This is the last week of it?
Yeah.
We just go through July 1st.
Yeah.
Cause of the federal program.
Yep. And then we also, if you scroll up a little bit, you'll see that Amanda Stamp resigned her position, but we couldn't put it on, well, we didn't want to put it on for board approval until we had someone to fill her, her spot. So we hired a new Nurse Stephanie Stale. And so we're going to request that we release Amanda Stamp from her contract tonight. And then if you scroll down, you'll just see our classified and our certified openings. So we're still looking for STEM teacher, SPED teacher, kindergarten teacher, third grade teacher. Nope. That's wrong. We hired our kindergarten teacher, so I just didn't take that off. Sorry about that. So does anyone have any questions for personnel report? If you go up just a little bit more for me Jenny. Okay, thanks.
Greg. Personnel report. Any questions? Could we have a motion to approve the personnel report? Greg has so moved and Al seconded. And all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, next we have action item E2, approval of the de novo contract. So we'll open that up for discussion.
Did you hear everything that you wanted switched, switched?
Well, yeah. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So we had Danielle Payne Field, our lawyers, and we do have Brian and Patrick here too. But Danielle went through and things are switched between, and she worked with de novo's lawyers as well, correct?
Yeah. Yep. So we, we had a different form of contract and requested it be on the, this form of contract. And Danielle said, or yeah, we work together. Danielle said, this is what works for you, works for us. And.
Yeah. So we had, and the biggest piece that was of concern was, was switched. So yes, we have exactly.
You might add that, you know, this is a, what is it? Architects Institute of America. And so there's been a thousand lawyers go through this with a bunch of code. So it's very standard, I think you could say.
Oh yeah. And it's, it spells out exactly what we need to do, what the district needs to do. And it's very clear language. So.
The other comments or discussion? Otherwise we'll ask for a motion to approve the de novo contract.
So moved.
Maybe I should say, yeah, approved of the de novo contract. Say that right.
Well, second.
Al moved and we got Joe seconding. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next we have item three, the Merchu contract for July 1, 22 through July 30th, 2023.
So this is just our contract for school-based therapy services, which is just running again. And I did, we, we did ask for a few changes. Just, it was a running contract and it didn't end each year. So it ends each year in July, or June 30th and starts again in July, just in case we want to make some changes. So, and then we've made a few changes on just their, what, what they need. And they were just little minor things, but it's basically the same and it helps give our kids therapy during that year. So.
Okay. And a motion to approve the Merchu contract for July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, unless there's any discussion on that. Questions I should, should ask first? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes. I'd like to.
Jade's thinking about something.
We were so moved.
Second.
You got Greg seconding? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay. Number four is the approval of disposal of excess and obsolete equipment and supplies. I think maybe Brian.
We did this very specifically about a year ago with some stuff that we knew we had to get to, get rid of. What we did here is we made this a little bit broader. Just to give you an example, Jim can probably see out the, out to the left there, we have an old speaker that was in the band room. Well, rather than having to come to the board every time we have a speaker to sell, what we did is we, we made it so it's a little bit broader. A lot of times, a lot of the stuff we're getting rid of, to be brutally honest with you, we could very easily, probably could have been thrown away. But what we do is we put them on gov deals or the such. We don't have to haul them away. We don't have to, they have to come get them. I mean, I think I told you this last year with the bleachers, the old bleachers upstairs. It was going to cost us $18,000 to have them professionally removed. We sold them for a dollar and we had $500 worth of scrap metal we got out of the deal. So I figured we made about $18,000 on that deal.
And they, he came and took them down himself. We didn't have to do any of them.
So what we're just trying to do here is, is if we've got a bunch of desks that are, that have sat storage for 10 years, we can actually make some storage space. That's, so what we're trying to do here is just make it broad enough that we don't have to come to the board every time we want to sell a lawnmower.
And if this is just a discussion approved in the board, maybe that's sufficient, it doesn't have to be a policy or something.
What, what happens is, it isn't policy. That's the reason I brought this. Okay? In order to sell something, you can junk anything you want. That's real easy. In order to sell something, the board has to approve that disposal. Once it's approved, that disposal, we'll essentially have to post an ad, a very small ad in the paper twice stating that we are going to have stuff for sale. Please watch various places and gov deals would be one of them. And then once that's been advertised twice, then we're free to sell stuff. So you actually have to go through a process.
Like if someone else wants it? I know you have posted in the paper, but.
Okay. How we do it, just because out of ease, we approve this, we post it in the paper. We don't put prices, we don't put specifics, what we're selling. And then once we do sell it, it will be on gov deals or if it's, let's say it's something that would be very appealing locally, we'll put it in the Harlan paper, we're advertising the Harlan paper. But we have to advertise that we're going to be disposing of stuff for at least two, two issues in order for us to legally sell anything.
Let's say I want a school bus to get my kids back and forth.
If we had one for sale, we'd probably sell it.
There's so many comments for that. Does this have to be a policy change?
No.
It's just going by policy.
It's going, what I'm doing is I'm going by policy.
Yeah, got you. I just want to say thank you for making the most out of the assets we have. I know you're putting effort into getting the most.
We've got rid of stuff that we would have hauled to the landfill and we've sold it.
By the time it gets to this list, it's.
By the time it gets to this list, it's, I mean, when you've got an old weight machine that doesn't work upstairs, there's somebody wants to give you a hundred dollars for it. Beat scrap metal prices.
Scrap's going up.
Yeah. Yes. Okay. Could I get a motion for the approval of disposal of excess and obsolete equipment and supplies?
So moved.
So moved by Joe and second.
Second.
We got Greg seconding. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Number five, policy review schedule, second reading, 401.012 and on and on. And so all my discussion on that. I don't want to notice any concerns.
I'd move the approval of the second reading.
Okay. Thank you, Al. And we got Jade seconding. Keeping up Catherine?
Yep.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay. Now we have the first reading policy review schedule. And this starts on 401.10. Any discussion, comments on that? I did notice the first paragraph Catherine just needs to be left justified and centered. But.
Oh, thank you.
It's like, it's not Excel knowledge coming out of you.
I know grandpa must proofread his kids.
He said something in Excel and I was like, I have no idea what to do with this.
Too important. Any discussion on it or can we get a motion to approve the policy review schedule, first
Yes, please. I moved to.
Jade makes the motion and a second on the first reading.
Sure.
Joe's got the second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Number seven is the, action item is the consent agenda, which means we can do these all together or separate them out as you wish. If nobody minds, we'll keep them together. We've got A, B and C. First, A, minutes. B, accounts payable. And C, the financial reports to, to discuss up for discussion.
I was on financial reports and looked, quite a few questions for Brian, which I tell you what, that's a valuable resource there.
Mine were shorter and easier.
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. I had a little question. I was just going back between the consent agenda, this B where it says, I, 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 two I's and three I's. And I was trying to go back to this. It starts out with operating fund, which I think is probably operating warrants, Brian? That, that's number two, is that correct? There probably is no prepaid, that's I. I was just trying to kind of look at what's here compared to what it says on the.
The prepaid is typically going to be something like if you have the P card and stuff. The, the, you're also going to have, I'm just going to give you a real general example. We prepaid, we don't prepaid, but we pay officials. If an official officiates today, he'll get paid probably next Tuesday. So those are actually prepaid warrants.
So my, my question is, is I, two I's and three I's, are they just in general totaled in here? It doesn't go by the outline necessarily. Now here it says operating fund and over here it says student activity, but it doesn't really coincide with this B accounts payable.
He's got the.
If you know what I mean.
The actual bill, I think.
Yeah. In other words, I suspected this was double I here. It says June general fund, operating warrants, it says operating fund. Maybe I'm splitting hairs here. I was just.
So I think it has totals, but I think.
They're just kind of all, all in there, I take it.
Yeah. You're, you're going to have all your funds in that.
Okay. Okay. I was just trying to figure that. Just trying to understand it. Sorry. I'm trying to figure out. This is complicated stuff, the school keeping from school. Am I mistaken, Brian? But did you break this out on this, A, first one here for the financials? You have the general fund there and you actually show revenue and expenditures? Did you add that on there where we can see the expenditures too for the different funds? That's on this one here.
Right.
Remember we talked a little bit about revenue versus expenses and you said, oh, I'll maybe put something in there to help you.
First of all, this is going to be a fund balance report here. Okay? The, the, there's four reports I give you. One is, is that's all your funds and it's the activity showing the revenues they had, the expenditures they had. Okay? So that's that report. The second report is, it's telling you the, the funds that we have on deposit at this time. Okay? If you go to the third one, I can't remember. That's the revenue report. And that just gives you an idea of where we're at for the year. Okay? The fourth one is the one I think you're questioning that we talked about possibly. But if you scroll, go a little farther.
Yeah.
Go a little farther.
A little farther.
A little farther. This is the column that I added that we talked about last month. This is the column that I added, that we talked about last month.
Percentage of... Oh, I see, okay.
Percentage that it should be. And I said, revenues, doing that for the revenues, Jim, really is, honestly, is probably counterproductive because your revenues come randomly. You get property taxes twice a year. So you're going to have, for a while, it's going to look, there's nothing. Then there's a whole bunch, and then there's nothing. So what I did is I just did it for the... Yeah.
I was going to say, this made the most sense to me, this first one, because underneath here, under comments, you said April is large property tax revenue month. I mean, that really...
That's, to me, that's the best report because this is what you also get when you get the annual treasurer's report. Because it just basically says, okay, what happened? Why did it happen?
Yeah, your notes there are really helpful to at least understand the big picture a little bit because for us, it's hard to sometimes understand some of this other stuff. So I appreciate that. And I like the expenditures too for the month. Is this, let's see, now this would be April, would this be just for one month?
Yes. If you, yeah, if you read over there, it starts April 1st and then it's at the end.
Oh, I got it.
Okay.
Okay.
You have a look on the far left there. You could do it year to day, but it's not as valuable.
Interesting. I appreciate that, though. Okay. Any other discussion or questions on all those numbers things? I don't know, is that fair to call them the numbers things?
You can call whatever you want.
Okay, if we could have a motion for the approval for the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Joe.
Second.
And seconded by Greg. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, that is approved. And we're to the end of the meeting. How about a motion to adjourn the meeting, unless there's any other thing? I guess not on the agenda, we shouldn't bring up anyone.
No.
Who would like to make a motion to adjourn today?
Are you saying I bring up...
So moved.
So moved by Greg. And I think Jade has done a second one. All those in favor, aye? Opposed, nay? Okay, thank you for...
I have one question today.